Calling the ordinance review committee to order with 5:03 on March 15th. The participants in this meeting are gathered remotely during the COVID-19 pandemic as a result of an executive order by Governor Baker on March 1st, March 1st, 2020, March 12th, more than a year ago, allowing us to do so. The present is Omar Gomez, Thomas Peak, Sam Sharon, Kay Collins, Helen Korchik, and Personnel Director Emily Lusell. Okay, we're here. We don't have any minutes. There's no public to speak, but just in case. Nope, okay. We don't have any minutes yet. So is there anyone who's going to take minutes today? Sam, is it your turn?
Yeah, I think it is. Just grab some paper.
Okay.
Old school.
I can't take that fast.
Okay. There's always a video too, if you need a replay to get all those minutes.
Yeah, yeah.
So I don't know if you want to go through the meeting twice. I'll probably I'll probably start with, we'll do it out of order and start with Chapter 7 because we have Emily here with us. Emily's the Director of Personnel, so it's great to have you here because we muddled through these ordinances and we were like, "We don't know what goes on in Personnel," so we don't have to wonder. We can But these weren't too long. Did anything come up for people? We can discard it if you don't have time to read them. They're pretty short. So why don't I give you a minute just to refresh yourself from 7:01, that page? I'll actually share my screen.
I didn't come up with anything specific, although I did, I did read through the entirety of the Mass State law about the merit increases for police officers, just to familiarize myself with that. And I do have a link to that if anybody needs me to share that in the chat.
Okay. Sure. Sorry, I'm not going to make anyone sick with this farting here.
If it helps, it's on page 79 of the PDF.
Oh, thank you at the top. You're right. Thank you. Are you sick? Although Emily, in looking at these, was there anything that you saw that's no longer true or relevant to how you, how things are done?
Uh, no, I looked through everything today and everything looks pretty on point with, yeah, with everything that's currently going on here, so.
Okay.
I just realized we don't have a chat. Does anybody need me to email them that language, just in case they want to see it?
Is it long? I mean, it's not like you could just read it. It's like a book or?
Oh, no, it's too long to read.
Oh, it's too long, yes. Sure, you can read it. I didn't know if you just had like a blurb about it or say, "Okay, yeah."
No, but it's, I mean, to sum it up, "Too long, don't read." It's really just about, you know, the levels of credit that law enforcement officers get for certain types of education, higher education, that goes toward either a law degree or criminal justice or police education. So it's basically just the stages of what kind of credits they get based on what kind of education they pursue and the accreditation of any institutions of higher learning that they attend.
These are the cleanest, I think. Ordinances we've been through, they're pretty dry and to the point. Nothing looks, nothing stepped, jumped out to me as, you know, belonging with the hawkers and junk peddlers. No questions for anyone? Okay. We might already be able to, we might release you already, Emily.
Oh, my gosh, so quick!
No, not one question for you.
Okay, well, if anyone thinks of anything, feel free to reach out.
Okay, thanks for coming.
Sorry, but there's, sorry. Sorry, everyone. There was some language from like the 1950s that made reference to a specific to a specific company that had, or consultant that had put together the the classifications.
Right, Griffin Hagan and Associates, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that?
I, you know what, I was kind of wondering about that too. I'm not familiar with that, actually.
Which number is that, Sam?
It's 715?
Yeah.
Right above where we're at.
I see, yeah.
And then, and then 716 below it, I think applies only to a period of time in the 1950s. Specifically 1950.
Yeah, I mean, that's the only thing that I, I sort of noticed in these pages is that 1950 really stood out as just you know, kind of a while ago for the paperwork, but with no amendments and stuff. But, I mean, I also don't know really what there would be to change.
Well, we put in the new pay scale. We started that 2019.
Right, that was the newer, right, that was.
Yeah. July 1 of 2019.
So, so should this then be updated where it?
About 715 and 716?
Yeah.
And also the pay, the reference to the pay plan?
We still have, we still have the pay plan with the Part A and the Part B, and all that stuff is accurate. It's just that our most current pay scale was from the Collins Center report. And that went into effect July 1, 2019.
So it has, so Exhibit B that it references has just been?
It's been updated.
Updated, okay.
Yeah, so we have Exhibit A and Exhibit B, and those are like the pay grades and the pay like categories essentially based on the position and the scale that they would land on.
Okay, so but they both reference now the Collins Center report and not the Griffin Hagan and Associates?
Yes.
Do you think that should be updated?
I think so, because I couldn't even find them on the Google.
Okay. There's a lot of ordinance activity in the 40s and 50s. All right, Ben. Thanks, Emily.
Yeah, thank you, guys. We'll talk to you later. Good night.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Bye.
Bye. I guess Mitch couldn't attend this evening, so I had sent him our questions and told him he could just, you know, bring his answers to discuss with us. So I don't have them yet. So does anyone else have anything to just update from our last meeting based on anything we talked about?
I did, I did email everybody in, as a response to Tom's email, the potential language to add about veterans to our report to the city council. I did read through the, I did read through the plastics ordinance again, and I did notice that there is a segment for, you know, in terms of accessibility for straws, that they can be provided upon request. So I did-
That was a large part of the discussion during that ordinance creation. Let me get back up to 615. We are going to start today at 6, here, 616, right? The second half of the sixes.
For 615.
Right. We think we went through all the
We went through all the individual ones.
Fees and everything, right?
Yeah, yeah. So 616. Any questions about? I was wondering about this alarm thing because my, my house has set off alarms. I was wondering if I was going to get charged. Right, so you get one, you get maybe one through three times.
Yeah, three strikes, you're out.
Yeah, yeah, then you get paid. Anything come up for anybody?
In particular, I think the only thing that I had a question about, and let me just find it, was the, the printed materials thing. Because I think most of us know that you're not supposed to leave things on people's, on people's property. I'm wondering how much that's, that's enforced.
Where is that?
It's, it's actually up in the fines bit, and I can't remember if we talked about it, but it's the placing unsolicited printed material upon a public or private property.
Yep.
Is subject to fine.
It's number 12, page 69.
Yep. And it just reminded me to look at that again because of the newspaper section, because you know, there's always like internet complaints about the newspaper and the plastic bags that are getting put on people's property. I think I was just curious if that ever actually gets enforced.
Um, I don't does very frequently, and I know that Counselor Derby has a lot of thoughts about that.
Did he? I'm curious to know what his thoughts are, because there are things like, like, like flyering for community, you know, community events and things like that, where I know you're not supposed to technically write, "Put anything in somebody's mailbox" unless you're actually mailing it, right?
Yeah, that's a postal code.
Yeah, that's a postal thing. But like, what about like even during campaign season or just, or any kind of community thing? Do you stick info on people's doors?
It's, it's 50 bucks per violation, and I would think that, I mean, I wonder whether, say it was campaign signs or something like that, each sign posted would be 50 bucks. It, it seems like it's maybe, I don't know. It's, I'm not sure it has anything to do with our charge, but that seems like a pretty steep.
Yeah, well, also, like, I was just thinking, you know, with A Kind, and we passed out, and I volunteered for A Kind, we passed out about availability of meals. You know, just how, it just seems like a natural way to do outreach to communities. I mean, I can see why that's there, but to have this violation charge there, it's like, people might call up about groups they don't like, but not complain about groups they like. You know, if they like the material, it's not a problem. If they don't like the material, it's a problem.
Right, and then in terms, in terms of distribution and accessibility for people who don't have the internet or maybe don't have access to travel to certain parts of the city to get that information, it does seem like the easiest, the most direct way of reaching everybody.
That's exactly what I was thinking about, particularly in light of the food program.
Right.
What we found out, what the group found out by flyering, under, you know, was that there were a lot of people that were not aware that, you know, in a pandemic, that free food was available. And it really isn't, to me, it is an accessibility, it is an accessibility issue, and I think probably Tom and Lindsay and Omar, you can, you can back me up, like, you've probably heard, I've heard from community members that people struggle to find information about, about stuff, you know, about city meetings, about, like, everybody will probably remember the school, you know, when the new school vote was coming up, there were so many people that said like, "Oh, I had no idea that this was going to happen, and now it's going to affect my taxes," because they're not people necessarily that that are part of Facebook groups or anything like that. So I, I would be interested in maybe bringing that as something to consider, maybe changing, changing the language on. Because I would say like flyering or flyering for community events or community support or mutual aid is different than like a business soliciting, you know, unwelcome solicitation by a business for profit, right?
Right, right. Because even like, Tom, you and I went and distributed things from the Public Health Department printed.
I, I was kind of just thinking that, or even like, there was a ballot question a few years back that I put door hangers up for.
Well, your fines are coming, I guess, so.
Well, it's been a few years, but, you know, I guess you can never really escape the law. I think, you know, but you're right, I think that like, well, that's the other thing, is I don't really feel like this is enforced. I mean, when it comes down to it, I don't, and like, maybe there's like a specific like onerous activity that they want to like more narrowly define. And, and then, but, but I, I do think that this is something that, I kind of agree that this is probably worth looking at, especially because I can tell it is just not enforced at all right now.
Right, and therein lies the danger. I mean, I keep, feel like we keep coming back to that point, that that's where things, you know, can be forced based on bias, and that's, you know.
Like, yeah, people could, you know, not be happy with a certain organization, so if they get something from that organization, call and try to get them fined.
Right.
Another, and I've even seen that during campaign season where people on Facebook are complaining like, "So-and-so left this on my thing," and I call, and I've even seen people say they called the police because they
Right.
Just because they didn't like that, they didn't like that candidate. Yeah, they didn't like that candidate, so they didn't want that information.
Right. Omar?
I thought, I think it should be like just for profit. People shouldn't leave you things there. And I also don't remember again how the news, the free newspapers get around it, which is, in a sense, just sending us advertising.
Omar? I, I, I'm trying to think about the reason we have this ordinance. And I agree with you. I think, I think we should review it, and I think we should be more clear. Because I think the reason of the ordinance is trying to protect the homeowners of X or Y group coming every week to leave me stuff at my door, probably just because of that. Just to avoid the, the one group comes every day or every week to my door living propaganda or something like that. I think that's the reason of the ordinance. I'm not saying that it's, that it's okay. I think we should review it and make it clear, more clear for everybody. But I think that is the reason of this ordinance.
Sure, so maybe a note in that, and that suggestion should include like reviewing the frequency that's allowed or setting some sort of limitations there.
There's, I think there's also speech issues that come up. And, you know, when you, and I wonder, I don't know enough about this stuff, but where you make a distinction between something that's of community interest, whatever that means, versus, you know, any other type, whether there's an issue there.
Right.
That would be something just a flag.
Yeah, so solicitation for profit is one thing. Hate speech potentially, and I know that that's, that's a, you know, like, I'm sure that there will be people that will object to that based on their definition of hate speech, but I think that the city, I would trust the city council to have some delicacy in handling how to phrase that. But I think that there should be, you know, should be language that, that specifies like, if it's community interest or mutual aid or something like that, then, then there's laxity in that, in that. Whereas if somebody is like, clearly like, you know, you all know, like, we all get the solar people that just come all the time to our doors. So, you know, if it's, if it's a company that's placing materials on somebody's properties specifically for profit, then, you know, I have, I have no issue with continuing to have regulations against that. But in terms of community support, mutual aid, and I think, you know, the pandemic and the things that people have been doing for public health and, and for, you know, for food awareness, for food insecurity is, I think is, is a worthy exception and a good reason to revisit that as an ordinance.
Okay. Again, you feel like in 2010, something was happening, right, with like people leaving stuff at first?
Well, I, I'm pretty confident I know exactly what it was, was those, it was either the Gazette or the Republican was putting out the coupon bags. You know what I mean? Like the, you know, the circulars and they're, they're in these bags. And I think that was actually really what the, the, what was, what's weird is that there's no, like, I, I don't know if there's a, if there's somewhere that I'm just not seeing where they actually have like the full body of this.
Yeah.
Chapter 8, Section 81.
Okay.
Can you repeat that?
Chapter 8, Section 81. I can try to get there, I'm afraid. Here we go, if you can tell me the page.
Okay, so we're going to get to that then.
We'll get to it, to preview.
At our next point. That might be a better time to sort of, because, because I feel like what I really need to do is read that section through and really like bite into like where exactly it's fine and where it isn't. I just haven't gotten to that section yet, so it's hard for me to really comment on it.
Well, I have it if you want me to just, just briefly read it, because it's pretty short. You know, there's, there's a paragraph that just says, "All unsolicited printed materials that are distributed onto public and/or private property in the city of East Hampton must be placed slash attached to a mailbox, placed on a porch, hung on a doorknob, replaced between doors. No such material should be placed in the street, driveway, or elsewhere without permission from the landowner. Fines are outlined in Chapter 6, Section 615."
So you can put stuff there?
So you can hang stuff, yeah.
Which seems a little bit-
You can't throw a bunch of stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so now, now we're okay. We've spent all this. But I forget, I remember we were asking, or Barb brought up a question about like this list here, and was it, and I couldn't remember what it was from my notes. This list like not exhaustive of all the non-criminal disposition? Like, was her question like, "Why is not everything here?" Or "Is everything here?" I can't remember what the discussion was about this list.
I think that was, it was that there are other ordinances which aren't in that list, but do have like non-criminal fees with them.
Wasn't she wondering too, like, do we really have a firm grasp on who is supposed to be enforcing those and the capacity for those departments to enforce?
Yeah. Yeah, and that when people make an ordinance and they pick a person, pick a department to enforce it, that they should really include that department in the ordinance creation. Okay. Really, well, if we have anything else to talk about Chapter 6 or 7, we could start talking about the presentation for the city council. I can share the draft that Tom shared. You guys ready to move on? I know I put it on my computer. I think I put it on, go ahead.
Are we finishing Chapter 6?
Well, was there more that you wanted to say? Oh, yeah, sorry, Jeff, let's finish Chapter 6.
No, I just, there's, it seems like there's a
No, you're right. It's just a, it was just a personal, I just, because I was, I was so, I had read this ordinance so many times, Chapter 621, so I know, I'm happy to read it some more. So, anyway, yeah, let's talk about or the urinating and defecating, whichever you wanted to look at.
I don't know that I want to talk about that.
Okay. Does anyone have any comments about the rest of Chapter 6?
I, I have a question about the straw thing. The, the ban on one-use plastic straws, although I'm looking to see where it is now. And I know that you guys just went through this, so.
Share my screen again. The straw, which?
It's 6-21.2.2.5, page 70, 76.
Okay.
My question, I guess, was, do customer, how do, how do customer know, how do customers know whether or not to ask? I mean, it just says that they should make, be available upon request, but it doesn't, I don't know how anyone would know to ask.
Well, I mean, I think at the time it assumed that if, if, if that was going to be an issue for somebody, then that person would probably make that known.
Well, it just seems like it places all the burden on, on a person with a disability to find themselves a straw that they probably need. I mean, I, I don't know that, if you guys already heard all this stuff, but just in reading it, I mean, I was thinking of, what, you know, what would I do? You know, if I, and, you know, if it was something that you should always have a ratio of, you know, a very small amount of, of single-use straws and a much larger ratio of, of whatever other types of straws, and that you should always keep them full. I mean, you don't have a situation where someone asking for a straw is, or maybe even outing themselves as disabled where they might not want to. I don't know. So I was just talking to a friend of mine who has a daughter who has a condition called Rett syndrome, and, you know, she's very much it was an interesting conversation, I'll say. And, you know, I don't, I don't know if, if there was any input of, from disabled folks. I'm not, I wasn't familiar with the process, so I don't, you guys might have gone through all of this stuff.
Well, I, I think that's why that they didn't ban it completely. There was, there, that, that issue was brought up throughout the process.
Yeah.
You're right. That, that's why it's there, because that was part of the conversation, yeah. That was part of the conversation with the ordinance committee. Their concern about the disabled people, and instead of just banning it completely, so now if you need one, now the person, they should be able to act for it, instead of just the restaurant or any other place to give it to you. Now, instead of giving it to you, you should act for it.
My recent experience at a East Hampton restaurant to go was they asked me if I'd like a straw, actually.
Oh, that's nice.
But I mean, that's not a policy that I was just thinking, I just ordered something and I remember I, because I almost said yes, because I thought it was just like reflex, and then I was like, "Oh, no, actually, I don't need one." You know, I thought about it.
The only thing was just, you know, how, how, making sure that people know to ask. What if, what if somebody has a speech-related issue?
Yeah.
You know, that affects their You know, that affects their, uh, you know, ability to get that across, I guess, unless they write a note or something.
Yeah.
I mean, if they had a speech related issue, then presumably they would either be communicating via note or they'd have someone communicating for them if they're in a restaurant anyway, because otherwise they'd be really struggling to order food.
Sure. But but you know what? It it I mean, I I think it's a legit question that and I think we should reach the disability commission.
Yeah.
To get advice from them, to see if we can fix this.
Yeah.
That's a good idea. We just heard from them, so.
I I I don't have to make special requests for napkins and forks and stuff.
No, no, no. But but I but that but I think that's why we have the disability disability commission and I think we should use them.
Yeah, in this instance, sure. That would be great.
Yeah, I'm sure that they've gone through this with other communities and I don't know if it was something as simple as, let's say, let's say there was a a a speech issue, but some there was a menu and somebody would have the ability to point to something on a menu to order, right? If they were out by themselves. So if there is a, you know, language on the menu such as if you have a need for a need for a straw, please let us know. And they, you know, would theoretically be able to indicate that.
I mean, it's 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 better than other prohibitions. I mean, if you if you were to ban them outright, it would be a violation of the ADA. And so.
I think it'd be good. I mean, to be at the spirit of the because the problem with someone like offering me the straw is that I almost just said yes because and I don't really need a straw. Like, I just said yes because so that's going to give out more straws than we want plastic in the environment. But if there could be like a sign or even on the menu or wherever you're ordering that says, you know, we have plastic straws available upon request. Just so people know.
Let your servers know if you have an allergy or something, you know, like you need your your order.
And that has to be signed in the restaurant to the allergy.
Right, right, exactly. So maybe this is like as simple as putting a plaque up near the other utensils that you might pick up or that might get put in.
I also like really liked Omar's suggestion of having the commission.
Disability.
Could we get someone?
Would affect, so.
Could we? Do you think Omar, do you think it's possible for us to get somebody to come to one of the meetings to talk it through with them?
I think so.
Yeah, I actually had been speaking with Angelique, who's the our chair of the disability commission here in East Hampton. And she was gonna look over the ord. They were gonna look. That was one of the tasks they were gonna do in their committee is look over the look over the ordinances, but I I mean, I think they'd be happy to come, but I think it'd be a better use of our time like if because they're gonna look through it on their own and then if we like mark questions for them. So when they come, we've got like a bulk of questions.
Yeah.
Like areas where we know, hey, while you're looking through it,
Yeah.
this might be something you'd be interested in looking.
Yeah, so I add that to the.
Yeah, I would feel much better having having it direct from the source, so to speak, or feedback directs from the source.
Okay.
That was it for me.
Okay. All right, cool. Um, Tom, can you share share your screen? Do you have your draft you wrote?
Uh, yeah, I can. Sure. One second.
I'm on my little laptop and.
Oh, I need to be made a co host.
Okay.
Got it.
Um, we're on the agenda for the first meeting in April. We will be on the agenda. First Wednesday in April.
Oh, the first Wednesday in April? I just want to put that in my calendar.
Yeah.
So that's the seventh, right?
Mm hmm. Yeah.
Okay.
What time are those meetings? What time do they start?
Six o'clock.
Okay.
Yep.
Uh-oh, I'm I'm frozen.
Uh huh.
Um, I may I have it.
There you go.
There it is.
Okay. So this um this is more a format. I know that there's like a bunch of stuff I didn't get in here just because um at the time I was, I I don't know, I just I was on vacation last week and I I didn't do as much as I thought I was gonna do. But I think this is the general I my general idea for how to transmit this information in a way that straightforward is to just say and and the main thing is that we can do, but I know we're gonna periodically update is just say, as of blah, 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 we've reviewed up to blah, 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 and here's the recommendations that we have. And then um, I went through and and grabbed a couple of them. Um, I know that there's some other things that we had talked about, but I know some of them we had outstanding questions and I didn't want to. These were things that I feel like we all kind of were on the same page, so. Yeah, this is um this is sort of the the idea. So just first of all, how do people feel about the general format of this?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay.
Did you want to divide or or did you want to categorize things like kind of inclusive like based, you know, that refer to inclusivity and potential discrimination versus just outdated?
We could. I mean, I think that sometimes they're one the same, right? I mean, like, so for instance, like the the shift towards gender neutral language, like I think a lot of that's just outdated from a a time when everyone just assumed that the mayor was always going to be a man.
Right, right.
But yeah, I I don't have a problem uh sort of splitting it up. This was just the first thing that came to mind.
Yeah, yeah, within those. I just think that given our charge, we definitely want to highlight the things that relate to inclusivity and and yeah. So it might be nice just to hear some things we found that are related to that. And here's just some flat outdated things.
But I think breaking it down to the way that it is in terms of the sections is helpful, though, too, in terms of if there are issues that go beyond what come up in discussion with each committee head. It can be addressed more specifically and it's easier to isolate it for each committee. But then also, you know, I think there's a a nice blend of both of those things, like where there are blanket recommendations.
Mm hmm. Or it'd be interesting to maybe just put it all in there, but color code it.
I can restructure this later to like that, if that's if that's what you guys would prefer.
No, I like the same structure, just just when we're more just, I guess, in the communication to the committee, like be, you know, highlighting what we found in terms of inclusivity and discrimination. So we will have a what's today is the what's today's date? The fifteenth?
Yeah.
I'm just thinking in terms of working on this together and open meeting laws and um do but we have all the minutes, so that's the cool thing that can just kind of take from the minutes. What are your suggestions around that, Tom, in terms of?
Well, my one thing is um I can take the minutes and just populate it, but I do think that before this goes to the council, it probably needs a vote from like we need like a final draft of the vote.
Yeah.
We might need to delay that for one meeting. Like, I could I could go through the and or and watch old meetings or however we want to do it to to get it updated and and, you know, and to be a full thing. But I do think that before we send anything to the full council, we need to vote because if there's like some people that actually don't agree with a recommendation or whatever, then that's also something we need to know.
Are we able to meet again before that meeting? The April meeting?
Yeah, I think so. Let's check the calendar.
I mean, that would be, you know, we need to be dependent too on if we feel like or Tom, if you feel like it's enough time to throw in the rest from the minutes and everything.
The only challenge that I see is that I uh that we don't have the minutes from the last meeting and we certainly won't have the minutes from this meeting. You know, if I can get that information, then yeah, I mean, frankly, we didn't really talk about. I think I could. I think I can probably handle this meeting because we we just there wasn't a whole lot that we terribly, you know.
And mine and mine, I will try to send it before the weekend.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, if I have at least a draft of those, then I can come up with a a draft for our next meeting.
Okay.
Everything that was mentioned in the minutes. And then I'll send that out. And if anyone sees anything that they feel should be included that I looked overlooked because these are just dense meetings and it's totally possible that something got skipped over. Well, we can just add any, you know, if you just come with with language to the next meeting and um and we'll just add it or we'll, you know, or we'll we'll discuss adding it and whatever we feel is like a, you know, a full draft, we can then send on it. You know, or does that sound good?
That sounds good, yeah. Yeah. Um, do you want to? Mondays work for me now. It seems like Monday is a good day for most people. I just, you know, I didn't notify Natalie at this meeting time, so she didn't know that we are meeting today. But I think Mondays are generally okay for her.
And do we want to aim, just to give ourselves a little time, do we want to aim for presenting at the twen- the second meeting in April, which would be the twenty first?
That's the twenty. Is this the twenty we got? Um, sure, if you think we need more time, I mean, we'll just be kind of reviewing more things and adding more things to it.
That's true.
So I feel like we could throw it together, like.
I think we could throw it together, yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be everything. I think people they just want to know like what's going on here, you know, so we don't have to drill down. Even if someone wanted to put it or, you know, we could even put it into like a slide presentation that's like huh. You know, but do you how about we could meet that? So we could meet April fifth, which is two days before the meeting, or.
If we meet April fifth, would we be able to have the agenda only be working on the presentation so that we are not adding anything to it? Would that be doable with open meeting stuff?
I think we can, as long as we're on the agenda, Tom and Omar, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think as long as our presentation is included in the minutes, I think as long as we're on the agenda, do they have to have it be a presentation in advance?
I meant for our meeting on the fifth.
For our meeting, okay.
So if our our stated agenda item is just working on the presentation.
Oh, just working on it. Yeah, we could do that.
And not adding anything to it. I think that probably would be more effective.
Okay, let's do that. So um, is April fifth okay? The Monday before that, I'm gonna be in Puerto Rico and I really am trying to take a break, but you guys could meet if you want to meet without me. Or April fifth, I'll be back.
All of this done by April fifth.
Yeah, the fifth works for me, too.
Okay, okay, let's see.
Uh, what time?
Uh, there's five o'clock for people.
Six, just kidding. I I prefer six, but if you guys.
Six is better for me because.
Okay, you want to do five thirty or six? I'm fine with either, really.
I'm fine with either.
Take six.
Okay, six. Good, um. I wrote my calendar, Omar.
So is that six on the fifth?
Yeah, six on the fifth.
Yeah, um, Tom, do I I don't know if this is a good time for it, but if Tommy, if you have the email for me and your screen sharing, do you want to bring up the veteran stuff or are we gonna go through this? Uh, all the paragraphs on this email right now?
Um, I think I can just insert the text of that email into this, like in in the meantime. Uh, you showed it last time and I I had no objection.
Yeah, so the only thing I added to it is at the beginning, um, I mentioned the specific section with the wage theft ordinance um, as a basis for the for the change. And then my suggestion at the language at the bottom is any city ordinance or decree that references veterans be updated to include language broadening the state definition to include veterans whose dishonorable or less than honorable discharge status was a result of their sexuality, gender or gender expression.
Okay, I've got it right here. So um uh, I'm, oh, man, my computer. Yeah, here, I can just take that and drop it right in. And um, I I'm just gonna do that for now and uh.
As a placeholder, yeah.
Yeah, there's if I feel if we feel the need to, oh, shoot that. Okay. Great. Um, but so the other things that I brought up were, yeah, gender neutral language. Um, the thing about registered voters and well, there's some people who maybe or another can't register to vote or haven't, but could still be really valuable on committees, so we should change that to just resident. There was the one that, uh, yeah, there was no term length given for members of the council on aging, although in practice it's three years, so they should probably codify that. What was I say here? What even is chapter three, article five? This is the problem with having me like.
I'll have it in like two seconds.
Penalties.
Penalties, yeah.
Uh, penalties for bicycles.
Oh, yeah.
Um, so really, it's section three point seven six. So I think what I was gonna say there is like.
That 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 could be applied inequitably and that instead of putting a sign, instead connect them with the resources in terms of like safe kids. Um, something like that. No, it shouldn't be a punitive response.
Yeah.
It should be an educational opportunity. And providing of resources.
Three seven six. It's not historically been. This could be utility for inconsistent. Sound good?
Okay, yeah.
Nice.
Uh, with information on resources to.
Such as, and what was the?
Safe kids, the Safe Kids program.
Was that the one with the helmets that were could be provided free of charge?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so.
Was that monetary fine or momentary fine?
Did I say moment?
It's moment.
Just be a second.
Monetary, yeah, I just wanted to, yeah.
Okay, we'll give your money back in a second.
You guys should, I don't, I pity the the people who I work with who check my writing. I type really fast, but I a lot of errors. Okay, and then this was the our the bulk of our conversation last week was I I just tried to quickly summarize this. Was to say, the committee found much of chapter five to be outdated. It is unclear what activity this section sees seeks to enforce or how reliably it has been enforced outside of article three garage sales. In speaking with city clerk Barbara La Bombard, uh, the committee came to the conclusion that the city's current garage sale ordinance imposes administrative burden on the clerk. Uh, city's current garage sale ordinance imposes administrative burden on the clerk's office, which is not necessarily covered by the small fees. Uh, the submit, committee recommends that the council eliminate or rework most of the section.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And I would just, um, just when you refer to a chapter, I would put the title of it, so people are reading it right in, right away have a reference. Like, chapter five, junk sealers, hawkers, and peddlers.
Oh, that's right.
Specifically, because I just like saying junk sealers, hawkers, and peddlers and sales of secondhand articles.
Um, and, uh, yeah, and I would say too, I'm just trying to find it. The one thing that has the potential of unequal ordinance is the one about minors. Um, not being out after dark. I'm just trying to find that one, sorry.
Yeah, curfew language.
The curfew language, yeah. Loitering by minors, section six.
Right.
Dash eight.
And that's one of the things I had asked, um, Officer Cici about, so, um, hopefully we'll learn a little bit more about the enforcement of that. I'm gonna preheat my oven.
Okay, um. Yes, that's a good one. So, yeah, when I get those, the minutes, I'll I'll make sure to include that one. I'll put a note in right now.
And it's, it's section six dash eight, loitering by certain minors during certain hours.
Certain.
Right. Loaded.
It's a loaded.
Um. Okay, I'm just gonna make that, that's just shorthand until. Sort of.
Yeah.
Um. Are there any other things that I definitely missed? I'll I'll, I will go through the minutes, uh, but if there's anything that really jumps out that somebody thought was like. A a major thing that I definitely can't, I can just include a thing to be sure that I.
Um. Don't say anything now, but I'll review my notes and just see what what I, you know, drew the most circles around.
Okay.
Thank you, Tom, for taking that on.
Yeah, sure thing.
All right.
Um, I have one thing that just comes to mind is that we had mentioned, um. Even structuring, I forget which section it was, but sort of the definitions and almost creating or having the council create. Um, new definitions for certain terms, whether it be, um, when you see, I mean, I know we're probably removing things like woman from. You know, the language, it should be more just, um, generalized and non-gendered, but, um. Or maybe there was, um, minority might have been one of the words that we use, that was used or, uh. Yeah, I don't know, just I guess we mentioned the the definitions at some point. Uh. And I don't know if that's just an extra note or not, that would be included in this.
Tom, what were you saying to define, like, which words were you saying to define?
So I forget, I would have to like review all of this and everything, um, but I feel like there was one point where we were having the conversation of. You know how in some of the, um, sections that will lay out, um. Definitions for different terms, um, and just saying, I think at one point we had said something along the lines for our city, um.
Oh, I see, kind of, right, right. But that was, that's kind of like how we're thinking about to include veterans, like.
Right, right.
Right, like, we weren't.
Veterans.
More expanding the definitions of some definitions to be more inclusive.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Cool.
Was I, if if I remember where I kind of remember us landing on that, and maybe I've forgotten something. Was this was something that we thought about potentially asking the city solicitor about at some point, like?
Expanding on the state definitions of things.
Right, and like how.
Right, that's.
How that would work exactly, like, where where do we have leeway and where are we kind of stuck with something?
That's right. We were looking at the bikes definition and everything too, and the way it mentions something and we had quoted.
Oh, but wait.
Right.
Yeah, nudity.
Right. Okay.
Okay. All right.
Misses. Uh, this is all just me, like, I'm, what's going out to the council, I'm just.
No ju- no judgment, Tom.
Tom, if if like, if we think of things, can we email you individually?
Yes. Yeah, totally. Um. Uh-oh, Lindsay, are you, oh, there you are.
Again.
Okay. Uh, yeah, it's totally fine to email individually, so long as we're not operating as a group.
Okay. Cool.
If if we can't change the language of 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 some of that stuff because, um, it's connected in some way to. State law or or something like that, we could have a a statement that says, you know, we acknowledge that certain language contained in, you know. Brit has, you know, has issues, we we we'd be stated in a much better way, but, um, like, some sort of a, um. A di- a disclaimer, I guess.
Hmm, yeah, that's an, yeah, um. Okay.
And I and I guess that would come up in in a situation where the city solicitors answer regarding the conflict is no.
Right, yeah. You know what else what we could do is we could do, um, a section here. Um, where we could say, um. I don't know, uh. Feedback from city officers and like, just give, um. You know, uh, just the various, uh, folks who have, um, provided feedback to us.
How helpful it is.
And and just sort of note, like, you know, oh, you, uh. You know, this person looked at this section and said that they did not find anything concerning, or this person looked at the section and noted that they don't actually ever. Use whatever. I just think that that's value.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. I think it tells the other city councillors too that like, when you are reviewing all of this, that we did our due diligence and they've already been consulted on. Um, these sections.
Yeah, I would, I would just say for organization purposes or or structure that, you know, maybe instead of having a section that says feedback from city officers. Um, include the feedback from city officers, um, in uh, in the section of the relevant chapters.
You're right, you're, you, yeah, that that makes way more sense.
So you don't have to skip around, um, between.
Yeah. I agree, that makes a lot more sense.
Yeah, I like it.
But I will make sure to to bring those those things in, and then hopefully we can have something we can vote on.
Okay.
Next time.
Okay, great. Shall we?
Can I make the motion that we adjourn for, uh, the night?
Second.
Tom, David, Helen. Hi. Tom.
Hi.
Sam.
Hi.
Kay.
Hi.
Omar. Okay, we we are adjourned.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye, guys.
Good night, everyone.